It's us, six o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting ordered, all right, everybody? First, well, we're off. Next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday at, I'm on elementary school. Public communication correspondence. Would anybody like to speak from the public, like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Matt Lang, I'm sure you think well. I'd like to thank you first for your time that you put into this, you know, spending some time, you know, last few weeks, through a month, just kind of paying attention a little bit more about what's going on, and I just appreciate you having me. And I think a lot of us are looking out for the budget, not just this year, but for years to come, and I respect that, and I appreciate your time. I think based on some of the comments that have been made over the past few weeks and by some of your own admission, I think there's a misconception on, everyone's worried about what actually happens in school. I think it's safe to say that the general public has even more misconception than everyone that's in this room, but you know, some of your questions certainly tend to, you know, allow some of us that are in school that, you know, there's just some things that you guys don't know, and I think that's fair to say. So it's disheartening when you hear the board speak, especially when I, in my opinion, that the board should know better than the general public about what's going on in our schools, and they made comments such as, you know, school enrollment being like it was in the eighties, so we should revert back to staffing that, or just have the level from the eighties. I mean, if we're being honest, graduation requirements have changed since the eighties. Accreditation requirements have changed since the eighties. Special education laws and practices have changed since the eighties. You know, at every turn, you have teachers who are meeting or trying to be kids at their level on so many levels, not just academically, but on so many levels, that just didn't happen in the eighties. And could you imagine any industry today suggesting that they should revert back to their practices from the eighties? I mean, the medical industry, or our tradespeople, law enforcement, there's nowhere except maybe music that you might want the industry to go back to the eighties. But, you know, so to ask your educators to go back in the eighties, or your educators to go back in the eighties, I just don't know why you'd want to do that. I don't know why you'd want to revert forty years. I understand the idea of wanting to save money, but reverting back to those practices when things have changed, it just doesn't make sense. I understand that you don't want to present a budget that is irresponsible, that I can completely understand, and I applaud and appreciate that, but please don't treat your children, and I'm talking about your children, like a number, okay? They're more than a number. And make sure that you're being honest in response to about their education and the evolution of education in general. Thank you. Have a Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? We will have another session right after our budget session. Communication, public communication. All right, next up is the budget launch session.
Just happened, um, requested by the board in the last meeting. We're on TSCV, the first sheet's a two-sided sheet. This is the appendix B co-curriculars by school, and we also have what we have for data when it comes to participation numbers in each one of those co-curricular clubs. And then the second sheet are the athletics that, if we add those up, it comes to the number that was on the cut sheet that was provided in the last board meeting, so it'll give you a preference point. That's all I have to say, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the athletics. Are all these programs running right now in the top? All right.
I don't know, it's off the top of my head. I believe there were a couple that were suspended by the appendix B committee for this year, maybe for next year.
Is there no cut for the high school track and field?
The numbers that you see on there are the total of all of those.
Are you looking at the athletics, or are you looking?
Oh, so I see, like cross-country and track and field are not listed under high school?
I think, I think what's big, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what's being listed are the JV programs at the moment, right? There's lacrosse?
Yeah, basically, what you see is you have elementary levels, and then you have your middle school levels and your high school levels.
Question?
So I'm not sure what your question is.
All right. You're asking why there's no cross-country or track and field?
Yeah.
I'm, it's just a guess.
These would be the, these would be the teams that would be cut if the board had to make those cuts. So there are many other teams that are not on here, like the varsity teams that are at the high school, track and field would be one of those, as well as the, you know, the D teams at the middle school aren't on here as well.
Okay, so.
This is not a complete list of athletics, these are the athletics that made up the number of the seventy-plus thousand dollars that I had on the last sheet from last meeting.
So if, if I remember correctly, if you had potentially, if you, if we had to make a cut, if there was a fifty percent cut, this is what, what the cuts would be?
This doesn't represent a fifty percent cut, this represents a seventy-six thousand seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollar cut.
Um, I see that on the co-curriculars, there's participation numbers, they don't see it on the athletics, is that just because it varies every year, or?
It doesn't vary every year. Same thing with co-curriculars, Alice, it's all half, it's just for this, this.
So still on the athletics, Canterbury's basketball for K one and two, recs? I don't believe we have that. That would be why mine, nothing played in.
I don't believe they have that for one and two.
Okay, and the, but the soccer is down through the rec program?
Yes.
Okay. Why do we not have basketball for K one and two? Old school was just, you started first grade, but now Canterbury runs all day.
I don't know the answer to that.
So are you just after me sitting in front of me? So I might look at you alone. Yeah.
Well, Canterbury's rec program is relatively.
So she's asking about, because there's a three-four basketball, but not a K one, and BES just lists basketball?
Yeah.
So she's asking why?
The reciprocity is off there, so I'm just wondering why? Maybe, maybe, maybe there wasn't enough people that wanted to play, I just wonder.
It's never been offered, and I bet you.
Okay.
And then for soccer, CES has rec, and it looks like Belmont does through the elementary school.
Randy, I'm gonna have to speak up. I was just clarifying that, the reason that there is a BES soccer is because the elementary runs that, and Canterbury's done through the rec program.
Thanks. Just for clarification, is the intent of this handout for us to add up the forty-six thousand, and then the totals on the other page? Is that?
If you add all those up, it comes out to that seventy-six thousand dollars that was on the sheet that I provided last meeting. So this gives you a list of the teams that would be cut if the board opted to cut that seventy-six thousand dollars in athletics, basically the teams would be cut.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking, just a clarifying question, like, are these like cumulative and not individual? Like, if I add the totals up, and then I add this total up, I end up with a different number, so I'm probably interpreting this wrong? Like, is it, is it like I read down the page, and that's the number you get to? They're not individual totals? I just want to make sure I'm reading it right.
You see, basically, that first total, the nine thousand, is the elementary?
Yep.
Sports. The next section, including the one being VHS, is the middle school sports, and then the last is the high school sports. You add those three numbers up, it comes to the seventy-six thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, I think where I went wrong was that I also added the forty-six thousand on.
That's just a reference number, that has nothing to do with, I mean, that's just we use to determine the payment amount.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's great. No, I just wanted to make sure that I'm interpreting what I see correctly, so thank you for that. And is the number we're still working on for the total budget, the thirty-one million four-four-three-nine-nine-five, the pink sheet from last week, is that still the number we're working off of?
No, it's twenty-nine million seven hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars.
So this.
Seven point zero nine.
Yeah, the top line.
Okay, I looked at the total budget, I was in the same column, just further down. Oh, but operating budget, total budget, okay.
Yeah, the operational budget is what the tax rate set on.
Okay, thank you. What is the, and this, the board may already know this, and just as an advisory member, I might not know. When you have a club and you have zero participation in a current year, that advisor doesn't get paid, I'm assuming?
Right.
But you continue to budget for it?
Yes.
Okay, how many years do we let somebody stay at zero before it falls off?
So we have an appendix B committee that meets every year, and we look at this, and if a club has not had any activity for a couple of years, we suspend it, and then we don't budget for it.
So no, like, not a, just a couple of years, no definite, like, hey, three years, four years, usually a couple of months, because I definitely see a couple on here now.
We did talk this year about, each year it's gotten, we're putting some parameters around it, so getting the principals to submit, or the advisors to submit a report of the previous year, because right now, our numbers are based on current. And so some of these, my understanding, that are at zeros, because they also didn't have an advisor at the high school level, and I'm not saying that would change, I don't know the interests, but I'm saying the appendix B committee doesn't have, I think we could get some better numbers to really look at this, so.
And then my second question going with that, is there a, and it's hard, because I see Granite State Challenge is one, and that is definitely only a five to six person participation, but something like SALT, which, old school, people actually applied to get in, you took the kids that were, or had earned it, if you would, I think seven is a low number, are people just not interested? Do we look at that kind of thing with the appendix B committee too? Or at the high school level, do they follow up with those things?
We, that's one of the things that we're gonna be working on, but there are certain clubs that, by nature of the club, you don't have a lot of participants, you know, such as, like you mentioned, the Granite State Challenge. So the SALT club is really a leadership team. It doesn't necessarily encompass everyone who is in it, they may have some people that come to meetings, but it's that particular group that leads the club.
Guess I'll just add also, I don't, I'm sure it's not perfect, but I think there have been attempts to make the percentage match what the time commitment, I don't know if that necessarily matches the participation numbers, but certainly the time commitment, I think, in theory, the lower percentage is a lower time commitment. Is that?
So every co-curricular should have a job description, and the job description outlines what the minimum requirements would be, which is how they get placed on a, it's called an appendix B schedule. So it's why, you know, the Dungeons and Dragons club is like, oh, two.
Yeah.
Because that's where they were placed on, basically based on level of effort and time commitment.
Okay.
And if people choose to go above and beyond, so if you are doing a club that needs once a month, I guess that's what the job description is, if you choose to meet once a week, that's about you as the advisor, not the.
Well, the requirement of your drug dealer.
Last, we have recommended moving people up and down, the appendix B committee based on, or the appendix B committee has recommended up and down based on the level needed, robotics is a good example, last year, so.
Probably my last question is, when does that appendix B committee meet? In my mind, it should be just before the budget time, so you know which ones to take off.
The end, we have to meet by the end of September. A challenge we're finding, which is what I was talking about, is that some of the clubs that are just starting, you don't have current participation numbers, which is why we need a report from the previous year to know, did it run last year, or how many people were?
Just to refresh my memory, we had appendix B on the agenda about a month ago. We voted to suspend a number of co-curriculars. And then we tabled the addition.
Correct.
Just out of curiosity, when we, when we get the numbers in September, and is there any tracking for how a club, club or activity maintains those numbers throughout the, throughout the school year? So if there's a lot of interest in, in September, and then by the time December or January rolls around, the, their kids are either involved in other, in other activities or sports, or they decide there's another club, if that dwindles down to, you know, zero, one, two, how, how does that work?
So we don't have that kind of tracking right now, but as Michelle was talking about, we, as the committee, have developed a form that we're gonna be sending out to all of the advisors this year, and that's certainly something we could ask, is what is the average attendance, or what was, you know, the attendance at the beginning of the year versus the middle versus the end? It's something we could certainly ask, but we need to just let people know what kind of data we want to collect, so they know, make sure they get it.
Can I make a suggestion to that end? Is maybe make it part of the year-end stuff that people go over?
Correct.
So that at the very end of the year, so that at the beginning of budget, we know which ones aren't gonna stay in, instead of looking for September's numbers, go off of May and June, like?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we want to make as part of the, the principal will have to receive that report, make sure they collect whatever, and then, then they sign off to release the statement.
So this was on, well, that's only on the agenda, but one of the things that was requested of Michael, I assume, because there might be discussion, well, what we want to do as far as the funding of these programs. I don't think we have to have any motion on the complete budget time, but I'd really like to walk away with a couple decisions. I don't know specifically, I don't want to talk about a decision on co-curriculars, if people want to support it, but we need to kind of make some progress, like, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you so much for putting this together. But you had a short window, too, because we met on Wednesday, so you even had like a shorter window than normal to generate this, but this is fantastic. Like, when I see co-curricular in the budget, I honestly didn't know much about it, I just think of like the, some of the sports teams that are varsity sports, so this is super helpful, and it just shows the level of transparency and trying to all work towards the same solution, and I'm grateful, thank you for pulling this together, I really appreciate it. It helps educate me and, and other folks too, so it's super helpful on that end. Because this is less than, this is like point four percent, point four percent of the operating budget, I'm like, not interested in, in making any cuts there, because it doesn't really move the needle, like, I don't want to nickel and dime over such a, such a small percent of the operating budget, that might be a misuse of, like, for me, for, I'm not speaking for myself, it's like a misuse of my, uh, attempt, efforts or whatever, because it moves the needle so little, so. It's just my two cents.
I guess I would confer, I confirm that as well, like, we have an appendix B committee, I trust that our school board, or the committee, is considering all this stuff every time they meet. We cancel or suspend, or whatever the word is, the clubs that aren't running, add, if, I assume, there is interest with students. I'm a little concerned that at some point, the co-curricular cannot become three pages, and I don't think that's, I mean, we have some. So, and I guess I would say separately, the athletics, I mean, I think the athletic numbers were pathetic around COVID time, and came and been presenting numbers showing increase every year participation. I don't know why we would take that away, I personally don't want, you know, be a part of a school district that doesn't have athletic programs. If you don't have the JV program, you virtually don't have the varsity. So, I mean, like you said, scientifically, this is kind of, yeah, they're, they're a dollar figure, so you might get that, but we have students taking part in this thing. I want students, I want students to take part, I guess the only, other thing I would add is, I know personally, students that stay after school and take part in these programs, they're probably better used in school. I'm happy to hear something.
Unpopular in going the opposite way, but when the way we're trying to go is, but can somebody find out if the first and second graders do start to play basketball in Canterbury? Because they're behind at three and four, if they're just starting to play.
They might just not be interested.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that, it's long of fifteen.
It's never been offered. It's never been, I didn't even know BES, I thought it was run through our rec department.
BES? Yeah, so, I would like to say, since I've talked about the Belmont Parks and Rec taking on more elementary school programs, maybe that's a topic where you just don't have. That deserves further discussion, but as far as financially, it just feels like shifting responsibility, like.
Still, there's still all the taxpayers, we're, either way, right? But I was just looking going, like, first and second, you know, if they want to dribble the ball, at least would they have the option to come over and play a BES with those kids if their parents wanted to bring that, would be my.
That's great.
Thing to that, because now I know why my nephew played at Concord.
We are all on school district.
Yeah, better than playing in Concord.
I think Debbie or Michael, you were also gonna check on the proposal around support staff, only going up step only, and how would that mean, how many employees might have to pay to work for us?
Yeah, so step only, there'd be sixteen employees that pay to work for us. We are recommending potentially that the board increases the district's contribution to health insurance by one percent, that would drop that sixteen to six people, very difficult to cover family plan, and that would add six thousand five hundred forty-four dollars to focus off the rate budget that you made that shift. So it's an increase, it's a net increase, six hundred five hundred dollars.
Well, is it an increase to this minus seventy thousand, so sixty-four thousand? So it's not in, just want to be clear, it's not a net increase to the twenty-nine million seven twenty-four.
It's a smaller decrease?
It's a smaller decrease. I just think that's important.
Okay.
Well, one salary benefit is not including health insurance, the other is to health insurance, we have seventy thousand salary fixed cost there.
I'm sorry, so the overall impact of the operating budget from the pay reduction, like, is it an increase? If, if the board was to only provide step, the step increase to the support staff, the original proposed budget had a five percent increase, average five percent increase for support staff. If they were to reduce that to step only on the salary scale, that's a, that's a putt of seventy thousand one hundred forty-one dollars from the proposed budget. In doing so, that would mean sixteen support staff members would have to pay to work here. If the board made an adjustment to their contribution to health insurance by one percent, that would drop that number sixteen to six. Okay? And in order to provide that additional one percent, it's an increase in health insurance of six thousand five hundred forty-four dollars. Yeah, so I get one thought. So, I don't know, I don't really know the details of step increase, I don't know if this is the right way to treat people.
So I have a question about health insurance. So I attempted to do reverse math, which is probably wrong, so I'm hoping that I could be corrected. I used to do math in the nineties, so, those were big class sizes back then, but if I got this right, with the one point two million increase in health insurance, that's twenty-one, roughly twenty-one percent increase, which would mean that our insurance is actually gonna be about five point seven million total. And then at the meeting last week, someone had mentioned that there's roughly three hundred employees in the district, and I recognize that not all of them are on health insurance, but that, if they were, that would mean roughly nineteen thousand per person that we pay, and we only offer a buyout of twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
So we will pay twenty-five hundred for them not to take health insurance.
Correct.
But we're definitely paying more than nineteen thousand for the people that do take it.
And up to thirty-six thousand for a family plan. We don't pay a hundred percent of any of the plans, so we're not paying the full boat, but you're right, we've never done analysis to really show how much it would move the people from taking our insurance to taking the buyback. Right now, we pay ninety-five thousand dollars in buybacks, it's ninety-four thousand something, so ninety-five thousand dollars roughly in buybacks. If you increase the buyback amount, it's just guaranteed that you're going to increase what you're paying out, but I don't know if you're gonna have any movement to have savings done, I said that. And I totally get it.
I understand your question, because even in my, my own employer, it's often offer a buyback, it makes no sense to me. There's gotta be some type of right even point where it's a good option for either the employee or the district to.
So ninety-five thousand divided by twenty-five hundred, knowing that's around, is like thirty-eight, so that means that our insurance is only covering two hundred and sixty-ish?
Plus, plus.
All those don't qualify.
Plans, plans, not all.
Correct, they don't all qualify for the health insurance.
Since even.
So the number gets worse.
Yeah.
Since even more.
Health insurance is a huge problem.
Yeah.
But it's also a big part of our benefits, and I understand it's what helps us retain staff, it keeps us competitive, but, and I know that there's nothing we can do about it in this budget period, but I would hope that as we go into the next collective bargaining, we look at other choices and other plans.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that. By the way, I was expecting my wife's insurance to go up, why? It didn't. Pleasant surprise, so I guess the small, it's driving, I don't know.
Is, um, is it appropriate to ask how many? Well, probably you could guess, but when was the last time we changed the buyback amount? I've been on about ten years, and I almost think that it was twenty-five hundred, ten years ago that I used to get.
It's been a while, it was two thousand for support staff for a while, and then that was increased to twenty-five hundred.
And that's just a?
I think teachers have been twenty-five hundred for quite a while.
That's what I was.
Longer than support staff. Longer than support staff.
So a teacher, and I'm sorry to ask questions that so many of you already know, a teacher pays what percentage for their health insurance?
Fifteen percent.
Which was, like, if I'm a single person, I'm just, just want to get a little map real quick. If I'm a single person, about how much comes out of my paycheck for? I'll, I'll tell you where I'm going with it, is it might be not worth it for them to say, no, I'd rather pay the fifteen percent because twenty-five hundred is simply not worth it for me, and I'll have double the insurance and reduce my out-of-pocket. Whereas, whereas the district where, if we upped it, we could save money in the end.
Yeah, yeah, but isn't the twenty-five hundred regulated?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's.
Only, you have to have, you can't give it so they could go buy on.
They have to have.
You have to provide
Right.
proof of, proof of employer-sponsored coverage to get the buyback.
Yeah, and even if you have private, even if you have private, you, you wouldn't get it.
No.
Right, so if I had, if I was a teacher and it, I could have double insurance, add less of a, add more of a value to me on myself than just getting twenty-five hundred dollars if that was worth more to my family. Some people, just because I had double dental insurance here for a while, and I opted out because my husband's employer's insurance was better, and he couldn't switch because, yeah. But it would be worth looking at because, hey, we could save on our co-pays because they go, they hit one and then they go to the next one, then we have no co-pays. And if you're not noticing much of a difference in your pre-tax check, if you offer them a little bit more, especially if I remember those checks come at Christmas time.
Uh, for teachers, not for support staff.
Yeah.
Support staff is divided over the year.
So that they like, just an idea as.
Well, I mean, in my, my current, uh, current employment, I, I get all, I think it's almost eight thousand dollars. It's not, it's not a one-time or, or two-time. It's a, they split it out monthly. I do know a couple other municipal workers down in the, in the Boe, Boe and Hurst area, and they get, they, they just have a flat fifty percent. So whatever you would qualify for, if you're, you know, si- single, single employee, and you qualify for the twelve thousand dollar plan, you'd get fifty percent of that. If you're, if you qualify for the family plan, you also get fifty percent of that. They, they have a much larger enrollment for, for the buyout when you increase those numbers.
Yeah.
I think where we're going.
I, I guess I don't understand if we opt, that's a, I'm not posing fifty percent aside, no, nothing about that, that's a good idea. Say fifty percent. Is that going, is that going to help the school district financially?
Well, we don't.
I don't know, because I don't know how many would take it.
So.
Definitely the number of people that are taking the buyback is continue taking the buyback.
Yes.
But I don't know what, at what point people would switch.
Plus, so if the number of people that took the buyback now stayed, stayed the same next year, you would lose money in that.
May, may I offer a suggestion? Because I understand that the contract said, okay, so we're talking about something we can't change right now. I think where we're all going, we said last time, I think this should be on the board's agenda for the coming year and really look at what options we have. As we pointed out last night, if these insurance rates keep going up, at this rate, inevitably, you're going to be forced to decide what, how much you're going to offer as teaching and all that stuff. It's going to have impacts, because these are large numbers that are starting to impact there. But my only point is, I don't think we can change it now. So I wonder if we just want to make that as something the board takes on after the budget cycle and move on with what we can do now.
Michelle.
So I have six questions. So.
Michelle, they all related to this topic.
No, because we can't change the health insurance.
Can I just ask one question before you do six? All the way back to the original comment about the X number of employees that we have to pay into the district. Did you consider in your formula, instead of increasing our contribution, keeping the contribution the same, or maybe lowering the contribution and upping the pay and stuff? Because it doesn't make sense to me with insurance the way it is right now, to ever be in a scenario of providing a higher percentage of the population.
So I did look into increasing the wages. And the result of increasing the wages means you're also increasing the buyback on social security and workers' comp and potentially retirement that the district has to pay. And you're increasing the taxable wages for the employee, so that may turn around and further complicate covering health insurance. So it does, it increases our budget more by increasing the wages.
That was my question. Just in general, I'm, I'm, me personally, I'm comfortable increasing harsh of the insurance. Seems crazy, it does. I don't know what the future holds, but I can't imagine us or any employer is increasing the contribution.
What is the percentage for support staff? That's who we're talking about, right?
So right now, we pay ninety-five percent of a single, ninety percent of a two-person, and eighty-five percent of a family plan.
So we go to ninety-six, ninety-one, or eighty-six, correct?
Or ninety-six point two to cover the other six people. All right. Because ideally, it's for nobody to be paying back to work in the district. Because you said it would leave six people having to pay back?
Those are on family plans. We, we're never going to be able to cover the family plan.
Oh.
So I go back to the only thing we might be able to move level on support staff is the briefing. Right, thanks for our insurance.
Thank you. All right. Where is the discussion on insurance? So, I mean, at some point, we need to figure out what we're doing for that.
So I, their, their explanation to you, Sean, did make sense to me. I was just having this conversation with one of my employees, annual calendar. Although it sounds contrary to what we're doing here by upping what you're paying for the health insurance, it's not the same as upping the wage, which has all these other fees attached to it and therefore could retain some earnings for you and make less of an impact on the budget.
And if I'm a member of the union, I am saying thank you because I, oh, I'll bar the charges as well.
Well, this, that's not, in fact, this doesn't impact union. The teachers' union doesn't change, there's still a.
It changes negotiations.
Potentially, but they totally.
And that's what I would do, I was.
Okay.
I just, I think that's a, I don't want to have employees pay yet. That, that's crazy. But increasing insurance doesn't feel. Sorry, I, I don't want to be a dead horse, but can you explain, like, one simple scenario of going to Souths? During the course of the support year.
That they have to pay us?
Yeah.
So, um, take your winter break, February. If they don't have that full week, by, what happens is, we take the percentage that the district contributes, and then we divide their share by twenty-one pays, because that's how much they, how many times they get paid during the year. So if they had a lower contribution from the district and didn't have an increase in wages during February vacation week, they would owe us a check at the end of the week. The family plan members are still going to owe us money at the end of December break, February break, the April break. They may owe us in June, depending on how many days there are at the end of the school year, so.
Usually they pay to work, that adds up to effectively what they're giving pay, which is going to be paying back, paying that's higher.
Then they pay back is higher. If we do not change the contribution, someone on a family plan is going to be paying six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars out of their pocket to pay for the health insurance next year. By increasing the one percent, that drops it down to a little over four thousand.
So I took it very literal, that's on me, that you had more people that were going to have to pay on a more regular basis, not just the weeks that include, like Thanksgiving was always tough, Christmas and New Year's tends to be a longer break because of the holidays. So you're talking about the people with families, plans, having to do it more often than that. Right now, with the sixteen that you're suggesting, those sixteen would be paying at those times of year when there's breaks?
Yes, or if they were out because they didn't have any, you know, if they were out a couple of days due sick time and they didn't have any sick available.
Is there an accounting way to not have them pay, but to have that carry forward for the next time, so that?
Well, what she was saying was overall, you take the number of periods they have to pay, even if you did what you said, they're still paying the district more than they're getting paid.
Well, you're saying that a couple instances, not over the whole year.
On a person plan,
Yeah.
if we don't change the contribution, their increase based on, say, you know, step one employee.
Yeah.
Their increase is a hundred and forty-eight dollars round.
Right.
They're in their gross pay. The increase in what they're paying for health insurance is three hundred and forty-eight. So they'd be paying just about every week.
Just about every week.
Yeah.
I have a question, and I'm going to regret asking this question. So if it snows, and we go back and forth between snow days and remote days, these people could be impacted too, because we're not making those days up.
Well, you make up the snow days at the end.
Not the remote days.
But the remote days, they're working. So if you're a classroom assistant, you log in the same as your class.
Okay.
And we do offer opportunities for employees if they are not in a position where they would be logging in. We have a subscription to Master Teacher, and they can take courses on Master Teacher, and then they can provide the certification completion forms, so we know that they did work on that day. And I have been able to write Master Teacher into a grant, so that covers the cost of Master Teacher and provides an opportunity for staff members to get some professional development.
Thank you.
So the part I missed, if you stick with the original proposal and then sort of a bit kicking around here, what's the difference in the volume?
Six thousand?
You're talking about the original proposal, the five percent?
Yeah.
So that would be, at the five percent, that was the seventy thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars that was the cut. And then you add the six thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars.
For a minimum.
Yeah, so around seventy-six grand.
All right, I miss the old days when even the support staff could have their wages broken out over the year, and then you didn't have to worry about this stuff. Yeah, I remember that.
So on the.
There's a lot of Department of Labor regulations with that, and it
I know.
does not work well at all.
So if you take, so just way in my head, if you were to look at some of the clubs and say, you know, realistically, they're not, not getting enough participation, this doesn't mind. Probably maybe do some of that where you can make, you know, swallow some of that five percent of the back. Maybe it's too late to gain on the PNCB, I don't know.
All right. Any other discussion about the support staff?
Well, you, you jumped over that, set the non-starter. I, I, I'm, I'm looking at it from the perspective, we always come in here and we talk about the administrative staff, and we have a discussion about do we cut them to the bone or not to the bone, and then everybody else's, you know, I won't say whole, but in my mind, that's not the right thing to do. About the rest of it all.
So what are your proposals?
What I'm saying is, if you look at the numbers of all these clubs, you can't make it the whole sixty-four thousand dollars to go back to the original proposal if the board chooses to go with option A here. But I'm looking at all these clubs, and there's, it's a very long list. You could make a dent, decide to do that. If, if it's allowed, defense of clubs, or is it PNCB something that has to be dealt with in more, uh, leading fashion in the next twenty months?
Anyone want to do that? I got them. Here, get the floor.
Six. Um, in the budget details, this is a general question. Is there anything outside of the rationale sheets in salary and benefits that we have not looked at?
You say we, that?
We, board.
Question for board, I've gone through this budget.
No, 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 I'm saying, aside from salary benefits, like, is there anything we haven't seen of it?
Are we missing anything?
Are we missing anything?
I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We went through the rationale sheets, the sections for each of the administrators, right? Take the plus salary benefits, is that on some of the budget?
You have other contractual obligations. I mean, there's certain things you have to do. You have to have legal, you have to have audit. You know, those aren't in the rationale sheets, that's part of the budget, that's not considered salaries and benefits.
So are there other things like that that we haven't talked about? They're not in the rationale sheets, but they're also not part of salary benefits? I guess that's part of the.
I mean, transportation, overall transportation, but that's listed. Yes, yeah. Anything else? You've got all of the school board services in the twenty-three-ten function, and if you, twenty-three-ten to twenty-three-twenty-one, which is the office of superintendent, you have twenty-five-ten, which is the office of business. Those are the majority ones.
So there's, there's our stipends as well.
That's in the twenty-three-ten.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd say if, you know, if we, if we're, you know, really serious about, you know, trying to, trying to reduce stuff, let's, uh, let's throw that back a lot, too.
I agree.
What kind of pump do you think we should take?
For a board?
Yeah.
Either all or none, is what I would say.
Well, I'm fine with a pump, go home.
I mean, re- realistically, the amount of time that, that, you know, individual, you know, board members, you know, put, put into, in, in, into the school board, realistically, we should probably be probably equal to what, uh, you know, select board, you know, get for a stipend. I think that's in the area of, you know, of five grand. However, it seems strange to me to be looking at potential, potential cuts without looking at our, at the eighteen, I think it's eighteen hundred and change, or eighteen hundred, whatever it is. Doesn't, doesn't feel right to be considering that without willing to toss that, toss that back. So that's why, I mean, that's why I say, you know, my opinion is either all or none.
Other thoughts?
Paul, I have a question.
Well, I want to stick, I want to stay on this topic.
Yeah, no. Is there always something I might kind of do?
Yeah, I, I'm.
Yeah, I have, I'm trying to find it.
So if you're looking on the detail, it's on page forty-five. Twenty-three-ten, sorry, twenty-three-ten, the salary, if I can, workers' comp for the school board totals fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So if they're not paid, you don't have to cover them under workers' comp?
Technically, no, it would be like volunteer. So I don't have to pay workers' comp wages on them. That doesn't mean I'm not stuck paying workers' comp if they get injured.
Get that.
I'm sorry, fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Did you already ask, over the course of the years, the courses that are offered versus what's mandatory, as you can see? Is everything mandatory that we're offering, or are there extra courses we're offering? The answer is yes, I don't have any follow-up questions.
I'm assuming you mean size group?
Yeah.
What, what are our purchase services?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer to my question.
I didn't even hear a question.
Here's the question, did the, has the board looked at, at the high school level, the course offerings versus what's required by the state? So you know what the delta is, if there is a delta.
Can you hold, can you hold? That's a great. Can you hold, can you hold? That's a great, great question. Can you hold on to it until we go through this one thing that we're talking about at the moment?
Okay.
Which is the school board services.
I thought we were done, sorry.
We had a question about what was what?
Purchase services.
What are our purchase services?
That was for the strategic planning?
Okay. Oh, and so.
That, that was on that list, wasn't it?
Correct.
So the twelve thousand development.
Correct.
So now we'd be talking about potentially taking the first three also on that list.
Yep.
Correct. To be honest, I didn't even know that you folks got compensated. I thought you were doing it as volunteers.
I didn't know after I was elected. I didn't know until I was elected.
Now, first one's a surprise.
Um, so the, the one in the middle there, that's a thousand dollars, is that attending a conference? Says conference.
Conference, yes, if they went to a conference.
That's been used in the past by past board members, like the national conference, for example.
And that number already represents a cut.
Oh, I see that. I just wondered what it was.
Does, does that go into like the school board's delicate meeting? Is that the fifty-five dollars that we had last year's actual?
Yeah, it's also the webinar that the School Board Association puts on and a board member can attend. He's on average fifty-five dollars.
Well, we are a mentor, so we didn't pay it. And we pay.
We pay a membership fee, but we don't pay the, we don't pay the, uh, so to take it over to board.
So then does that mean that, um, obviously the elections, if somebody new comes onto the board, we won't be able to, uh, give them that how to be a, a school board webinar that we adopted? I'm not sure.
How about the increase on the supplies? Is there something that needed to be replaced this time for that board?
So the supplies school board that was based on things that we had to purchase last year. And it was things that we were going to be continuing to purchase for the board.
I call.
Some of the binder information, some of the, um, when you're sending out your mailings, those are supplies. Um, the paper that we use for those mailings, um, the paper and stuff we use for the public hearing books, those are all board supplies.
We're gonna wanna have public hearing books.
I think so. So this year, we're under budgeted then?
Correct.
But in reality, the whole budget is bottom line, right?
Correct.
We have a proposal to cut the school board stack into zero. Or a couple of guesses.
Yeah.
All right. Let's just say we made a decision. Just asking for a vote.
Is that a motion in a second or are you just?
I don't think we need to take so, I would like it shown in our future, those that counts.
Yep.
Does that mean like we do, do you have to reduce each one to like a dollar so that each line, so that holds the line or?
I don't need to reduce the line because we're still gonna have items in that function.
Gotcha.
Because if, if a function doesn't exist, you can't use it.
All right. Let's put in that money round. Do you have other questions?
Yeah, uh, we currently have two open custodian positions. Um, but they're, they weren't on the vacancy pay sheet, I guess. Um, so what is the difference, plus or minus, not filling these two positions and continuing with just Joyce Janitorial?
Basically comes out as a wash. It's a little bit more expensive for Joyce. Of course, the contract, they don't lose two positions. Um, that's why it wasn't included in here because it's, it doesn't kind of budget straight.
So does that mean, sorry, the, the noise backing, the, so you said you didn't include them because you're just gonna continue with Joyce and it's a wash?
We're gonna continue keeping those in the, in the budget as our own positions. And the, the monies that we're saving because we're not, we're not filling those positions or paying for the contracted services.
It's not. I, I thought maybe it would be cheaper for Joyce with the benefits and stuff, those benefited spots.
It's not cheaper. Contracted services tend to be more expensive. We're only seeing savings on landscape. When I said no work at small companies, Joyce Janitorial, except custodians, they're, so with those contracted services, we absorb those costs. Choice unit board is obviously takes those costs they have into their fee for that provider. We don't pay it, but we pay it in contract.
I guess I just stated my question. We're budgeting for those two positions and keeping it in our budget. Isn't there work mix off based on those two positions? Isn't there money value? I mean, it's obviously money because you have that work mix off. I don't, is there a saving fee, saving choice? Not paying for those. That's what I mean.
Yeah, no, sorry, that's the total.
Yeah, that's, I just stated.
The total cost is to basically slow the cost out, which is cost on payroll.
All right. So what I'm hearing is cost of wash. So the idea is we prefer to hire our two custodians rather than use.
Yes, afford to put the contracted service into the budget, you can see an increase in the total budget.
So are you employed for less money in the budget for those budget than afford to put the contracted service into? So if we use these two as an example, my question's a little broader. But I'm assuming, uh, if you're contracted services, that basically a full-time job for these folks? So I'm kind of at a loss why somebody who worked for a contractor.
Contracted might be paying them more, which is usually the case. We have employees that leave us to go work for a contracted service provider to make more money. And then come back and work for us because we can't fill those positions.
And a lot of times when they work with a contractor, they're not getting the same level of benefits that we offer, but they're getting a higher hourly rate.
It's highly competitive right now, Jen.
I guess that, the cost of our benefits is why I'm so surprised that it's not cheaper than hiring our own. I'd assume that because we wouldn't need to offer any health insurance, that it would be cheaper.
Well, I'd also say if we have a vacant position in the budget for health insurance, we're budgeting a single person plan. So in theory, it could be more expensive than what the budget is showing, but we don't know what to choose.
When I ran the numbers on the custodian, whether it was a single plan or a two-person plan, it was still a little bit less than Joyce Janitorial.
Do they offer a different rate if we become a permanent, like, assign a contract for the full year?
We have a contract.
That's, so you.
It doesn't matter though, it's.
Flat rate.
And they can't always guarantee it's necessarily gonna be the same person either.
Does that answer my question?
Yes, and along those lines, um, it relates. So for the support staff, reduction in force, the grounds position, if we were to keep that position, so it's not ripped, but could it be a combined grounds custodian position?
We could combine it, the difficult piece of those, those positions are second shift positions, therefore we put a ground on second shift, which is, and like the prime example, this time of year, second shift might start at two-thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon. There's not much they can do for grounds. They can start an hour later. Then they're, they're on the second shift between the buildings.
Dumb question, but I'll ask. We don't have any first shifters. I prefer to move to second shift.
There's already custodians that work for a shift.
Is there a pay difference between persons on it?
There's.
No, between first and second.
Pay difference in a lead, in a general custodian.
I have a question. Is a, is a grounds person here for on-site for eight hours a day, five days a week? And a custodian, they're like on-site eight hours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes weekends too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think you asked six questions.
No, I'm not. Could we get the robotics program structured with job descriptions for each, including the non-stipend positions and the director? And the reason I'm one, because you have the director on here for cut. But we had, and I'm just curious with, um, do we need all of those positions, are people following the job descriptions as it relates to like the BHS position moved up to a significant jump in the stipend? And Amira had recommended that we split them and hire a director. But now I don't know what the program looks like. And so I'm curious about that. So we can have a conversation about that.
So we currently have the director, the high school coach, the middle school coach, and we do not have coaches for the elementary schools.
So what I, what I mean, I understand that, but I mean, are the job descriptions being followed, for lack of a better way to say it? Because Amira, one of the reasons, and I'm not questioning per se the whole thing, but when we upped that position, it was a full-time position, a full year-round BHS, coach position. And if she had recommended the director position, which we did because of the workload, so I am asking if the workload is still the same.
So just to, to reiterate this conversation, when we increased it last year, it was to be similar to like a three-season activity because the board was very clear, they did not support paying people for summer hours because that could set precedence to all the other sports.
Correct.
So it's not, it's a school year-round, not a full-year-round, just to me.
And I am just asking, because there's been shifts in the program, I'm just asking if the job descriptions are the same and if it's all still needed because in order for me to make an informed decision about whether we keep, whether I vote to keep director of robotics, I need additional information.
Go for it.
So.
Yeah, just, I'm thinking out loud, but if the director robotics position was removed, we still have a
Correct.
high school coach and a middle school coach, they would kind of act as their home. Because they wouldn't report to the director. There is no choice. So it'd almost be like two standalone, they report to the principal.
We don't report. They don't report to the director now. I mean, that's not the intent of that position. It was more. Right, but it's not a, well, I guess I'd like to see the job descriptions that.
The principals are still the one recommending the advisors presenting those reported consideration to the TNSB nominations.
There have been no changes to the job description of school, high school position. We do need to change them to reflect the increase in the statement. I don't think that's a worry.
Well, I just wanna say that the goal of the director for robotics was supposed to be so that they handle the school, the district-wide activities, which is like when they go to Worlds, scheduling that or, um, the Belmont Bash that is done in January, the event, and, um, coordinate between the, all the schools, make sure that everybody's following the program. Those kind of things, like I, I don't understand why the two elementary schools are gonna have a, you know, an advisor or a programming place already, that is the, that's supposed to be part of the job for the director to make sure that it's happening. Because that's why it was, you know, around ten thousand dollars for that person to handle all of that. Um, and to take that away because usually Amira was the one handling all of that, uh, aside from the part that was coaching. But, um, if someone holds the position of director, that's what I'd be expecting them to be doing is those, those jobs that take it away from the, you know, the current high school coach. And so she wouldn't have to handle that.
So the, the director in general is a managerial role?
All right.
Is a managerial role, if you will. Um, and as for the two elementary positions, we advertise for coaches and that's a volunteer position that nobody puts in the board. So without an advisor or a coach, the elementary level, we're not running the program.
Did those coaching positions, like for that, were they ever advertised?
Yes.
And what is the director doing about that?
About filling those roles?
Yes.
I don't believe those roles at this time.
And when did the directors start? It was the first week of October, right?
Yes.
But it's not, it's not the director's job to fill those
Right.
coaching vacancies.
Correct.
So that's why.
The job description.
It was a three-page description.
So.
Sean?
Hello?
I was gonna ask if I could ask my question now, let me know.
No, I won't let you know, I have it written down. Don't forget.
So in the athletics budget, there's seven thousand dollars for EMS athletic supplies and fourteen thousand, five hundred in BHS athletic supplies. So I'd like to know, I know it's small pennies, but I'm already, I am recommending we not replace any uniforms this year, which would be, uh, cut to the athletics of eighteen thousand dollars. So I'm curious, uh, I mean, that's twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars worth of supplies.
So that includes scorebooks, soccer balls, volleyballs, basketballs, softball, baseball, softball helmets, softball bats, baseball helmets, baseball bats, coaching apparel, golf balls, cross balls, golf tees, yearly awards, medical supplies, miscellaneous supplies.
All right, and my last question is, has the district ever offered early retirement? And how could this, if we did, how would it help or hurt us?
To do early retirement, basically in the collective bargaining agreement, that was put in years ago. People had been hired by a certain date once they completed twenty years of the district. They didn't necessarily have to retire, but they qualified for separation package. That is considered an early retirement program. And historically, we, the contract allows for up to six individuals a year. We've never had six individuals even apply for it. Generally, what happens is, um, when, when you have a separation, you, depending on how long the person has been with the district, you actually end up spending a little bit more the year that they leave versus what you hire for staff. So it's really a year out that you start seeing any savings.
So even though we only got four retirements, we could choose to extend the deadline to see if anyone else wanted to retire?
Um, that deadline's in the collective bargaining agreement, so I think you would have to discuss that with the union to see about extending that deadline because it is stated date.
Because I heard through the grapevine that there might potentially be other people might be interested, but having to say by October fifteenth, that is is a little bit early, so I just wondered.
So, just to make sure I understand, um, the. I think that May is very early, but I understand why it's there. Because we have to be able to budget for, we can't have teachers retiring in May. We have to budget for that May schedule. Yeah.
I don't know, I just wanted to throw that out there because I, I mean, I guess it would only be if we were choosing not to fill the position. Right, I mean, that's the only way.
Interesting. Right, it would depend on who's retiring.
Correct.
And I'm assuming it costs more because we're paying out for balances of leave that they have?
We don't pay out balances of leave. Not the formula we have right now, if they've been hired by a certain fiscal year. They get 1.75% of their salary times the number of years they've been with the district.
So that amount is why it's more, costs more when somebody retires and everything?
Correct, yeah, you still have the fixed cost items on that, so paying that separation and then the person that you're bringing back in or hiring generally is not at the starting. So some of our people that are retiring are only on, you know, bachelor's 10 off track. They're not all at the master's 30.
I have a question that I want, I don't want you to.
I'll go with all your questions. One thing real quick, I heard you say something about uniforms.
Yeah, I'm proposing to cut 18,000 of the athletics budget related to reform. I mean, if we decimate the rounds budget, I don't think, I think we can hold off on replacing uniforms.
So like the Ford stipends, you could have that as well. And because we've already agreed to a motion right at the time. All right. All right, I think Jay had a question.
I was just asking if the board over the course of the last few years looked at course offerings at the high school level versus what the state's been given. So if there's a delta, you're aware of the delta, may or may not weigh into your decisions.
So we offer all the courses that are required for graduation, and then we offer courses that are considered electives?
Okay. That I understand.
I, I sense the question is, have we considered getting rid of some of these electives? An effort to say.
Basically, yes, and I know people said they didn't want to do that. I understand that decision. This is another piece of information. I mean, realistically, what we talked about the last few minutes, I'm not to take away from the board's willingness to take some bait here. It's not moving the needle. Now either we decide we're not going to move the needle, but it's a hard discussion, in my opinion. I mean, we can't touch healthcare, which is driving a lot of this.
So I would cut buildings and improvements for $192,000. I'd cut rounds, 30, whatever.
You're working on.
Yeah. Each sheet, I've cut board contracted services. I've cut student work additional hours. I do not affiliate and support staff at 2%. I've cut the BMS general, special ed assistant. I've cut the four one-on-one behavioral, the way that we would advertise still. I cut special ed teacher, I can tell, I cut the SRO, and I cut the athletic trainer. I have other thoughts too.
Seeing that you, you beat, you beat me to this, going, going, going back up.
Should we do this by one, by one, just to kind of get some sense?
Yeah, sure.
So you have started from the top as well?
Yep.
All right, building improvements.
So I have a question while we're building. So this includes, does the HVAC system work for needs to be done? Looking at this to.
This, this doesn't include any of the HVAC work. It's not racial.
Which was actually one of my questions that I think I might have missed, not to preclude the vote, but the air handlers, were they in any of this? Are they already taking care of?
Oh, no. No, that's.
Started?
Starting this year, potentially getting a couple of air handlers, getting three phases to Canterbury Elementary School with $900,000 that the board reserved.
Okay. All right, so that's where we are with this, thank you.
I'll read that. Looking at close to $11 million, $12 million for the full project.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you.
All right. Question about building. All right, so here.
All right.
Rounds, repair and maintenance, new equipment.
And where, so when you're asking that, you're asking.
Service.
Cut.
Board contracted services. School to work additional hours. Unless you speak up to not cut it. Unless you speak up, I'll cut it, I'm gonna assume I'm saying cut it.
I could, do we, if we have voices on them, can we speak to or no? Or you guys going on a list about it? So the board contracted services, you said that was the strategic plan? Do you wish to crash that?
No, so I think the idea would be the work of that strategic plan, creating the surveys and such. We would move that in-house, maybe the board would have a bigger role in that. The strategic plan would still continue moving forward, but we would be hiring it.
The monitoring plan would have to move in-house, would attempt to bring that in-house.
Okay. Attempt, yeah.
The plan said we have a three-years plan.
So we're gonna ask the board to take on a bigger role after we cut their stipends 100%.
So like with something a little radical. Since health insurance is an issue, and it's small insurance, which we're both driving. Is, is there any benefit or is it even, I mean, I don't want to suggest something that's not legal. But what I don't understand is if this is feeding multiple school districts that are small, what prevents you from deciding to put a little money in or some money in, start some legislative pressure to change that? Doesn't mean you haven't. I understand what you explained as far as individual districts can get together and do that for whatever reason. But that doesn't make sense to me. These smaller school districts is killing.
Well, that's how they ended up with the New Hampshire School Healthcare Coalition. A lot of districts got together in municipalities and started a program. That's where this is a pooled program.
But you said that here was a small number, just this school staff, right? When I say school staff, I mean.
Say that again?
What I understood you, was somebody to say for the risk pool, this insurance agreement is based on is basically the employees in the district. That's it.
Our individual rating is based on our experience within this risk pool. So it depends what your total enrollment is within each district as to whether you are rated individually or grouped with others. So if you have a very small school district, let's say you have 50 employees, you're not big enough to be rated on your own, so they group you with others similar size to get you up to a certain amount. So our impact right now is based on our usage between medical and prescription. That's driving our.
I'm not an insurance expert, but it still sounds like it's concentrating this. You've got a broad statewide pool.
It's a combination, they do pool all of these together.
Yep.
And they cover a lot of that under the pool, so you do have some protections. But within there, you're still rated on your own usage. So that way, let's say our usage is higher than Guilford's. We share a portion of it, but then Guilford is not necessarily responsible for all of our usage either. So it's a combination, it's a blended.
Yeah, I, I didn't really want to take a lot of time, I mean, it's great, don't take your time. My question is, does, is there any room to start basically working on as a school district and maybe some other school districts, parts of the budget you're thinking to cut, say, no, we're gonna fund a legal firm or something else and start trying to each state's approach it. We think it would drive down some of the health insurance costs.
I don't know what the state would do to drive down the health insurance costs.
Isn't that what the New Hampshire School Board Association's for? Like, can this get brought up to them as a resolution for next year, for something to advocate on?
I, I don't know what, how they would do that with the health insurance. Myself, I don't know.
Potentially could, however, it would fall under one of their other resolutions, I would assume.
But if everybody's in the same situation, that's a lot of pain.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what they're there for.
Well, it's important to reach out through local legislators.
Absolutely.
Have those conversations.
So, yeah, I hear that, and I haven't talked to the local legislature this round. Last one brought this up. He was a pre-state, an employee of PACS, he was cutting everything, they didn't do no good. I don't mean to be flippant, but. I, okay, I was just suggesting leaving a little money in the pot while you think about it. Does that strategy work for over the next future years to try to bend this growth curve?
Yeah, I just, I guess I just want to make sure I'm clear a little bit. The board contracted services is specifically for the school district strategic, strategic plan. It's not necessarily the same thing that you're talking about. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
That makes sense, but I also feel like this is a different.
Okay, they have a legal line for that, Jay, in the 2300s.
Okay. All right, consensus on the board contract. All right. School to work additional hours?
So I'm not sure if I understand exactly what school to work, like the additional hours are. Can somebody explain that to me, just so that I'm better understanding?
So we have a school to work coordinator at the high school that works with all of our local businesses and connects our students with local businesses for career pathways. This would be increasing per, per hours to another 255 hours, I believe it was. So, and that's where that additional cost should play.
Does not overbeaten.
Mr. French, you came all the way here to watch this meeting. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
Love that position?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So she, she's about individualized career pathways. She's our ELO coordinator, our senior learning opportunity coordinator. Currently, she works 20 hours a week, three days a week essentially. She would love to be doing a whole lot more with our students and getting them out into the community more often. There is certainly a portion of the updated evening 306 regulations about career pathways. This has been something that I've been proposing for a number of years. It keeps getting, you know, kind of limited down to the budget process. She does a lot of good for our students, you can see my board reports, you can see my faculty reports, in literally bringing students out in the community and bringing businesses into school all the time she's been in. Because 20 hours a week, she's very active. And she would most definitely like to expand her programming to get more of that opportunity to more students. But you can only do so much in 20 hours, that's not much.
Is she the same one that arranges the career fair?
Yes.
So my input to you all having watched this, I think this is a tremendous benefit for students transitioning into a government. I would very carefully.
We're not cutting the program.
Right, we're just looking to cut the additional hours.
We're, we're not adding to the program.
Okay.
So would this make it full-time with benefits?
No.
And is the current person in it, did he say the ELO coordinator also?
Yes.
Yes.
So the school career coordinator, he's doing a lot more than just having students do internships. She, like, there's credit there on opportunities that end up on kids' transcripts, that clearly she is the go-to person. She works to find community partners, get kids out in the community, and presentations at the event. Again, I always try to highlight it because it's, it's a small position, hour-long. It's meant over a great deal of impact for individual annual groups.
So I don't know if we have any consensus on that at the moment. I just say, my, for me personally, my child was a great benefactor of that position. That's a great position, I see more students going directly into the workforce than we used to have. With that said, at a 7% increase, I have a hard time adding positions or hours each other.
So maybe.
It's unfair, it sucks, but.
Maybe for the board, you ask Mr. Finch to go back and say, or if you haven't already, what goes into that 7% increase? Anything that helps these students get more employed will all benefit as a community.
So we can have a consensus to cut it, to keep it, or if we want to table it and wait until other things happen.
Can we voice our opinions down here? Even though they don't count?
Yeah, but I, I want.
Yeah.
I would, I would not increase the hours. I think I have to say not increase out of this tone.
Not increase.
Not increase.
I think it depends on what else gets cut. So if staffing gets cut, that's gonna make the school less competitive for colleges, then you do want to increase the ability, capability for kids to be able to find jobs.
So there is a college element, but I saw firsthand, there's trades and local business elements, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like.
These students don't know how to go find that stuff.
So you would start a table, it's kind of.
Yeah, table it or keep it. I prefer to cut it, and the reason being, I would rather start there than at some of the teaching positions, and that if she's touching a lot of lives at 20 hours, I have a hard time, just like somebody else said, adding any positions that the next step would be, oh, now we still, because I don't know that we could ever do everything this position should be doing, right? Because I know that I could probably do that job 40, 50 hours a week with these kids, and we still don't have enough time. That it, we're probably one step away from it being to be full-time with benefits. And it would be used, I'm not saying it wouldn't be used, but we're going the wrong way as far as where we're going. So I would have to vote to not increase the hours. Even though I don't vote.
Not increase for now.
I would maintain or increase because that's a whole goal of high school. Is to prepare yourself for the future as an adult. And we have worked with companies coming to our house, and they're, they're lost, they don't have employees. Employees don't have the wherewithal to do what needs to be done for multiple positions in a company. So I would say it's definitely a important position. What we can do with companies to earn their partnership for the high school and get their support. I think it's a well worth.
I think I would consider maybe some increase, Mr. Finch come back to justify it. And I would look at offsetting somewhere else, like the extracurricular activities that have been kicking around. I agree with you, you. There are so many students when I was substituting, they just don't know how to get started, they don't have good parents. You've asked them, they don't have good mentors. This is the mentor, what I saw firsthand from quite a few students.
I want to be back on something handset, and that, like, one of, I think this, this person in this role, if they had these hours, I think that might be a great mechanism to try to get sponsorships for our Hewitt program. So if you're working with local companies, part of the conversation is, hey, would you like to donate $10,000 to sponsor every student or whatever the dollar amount be? You know, would you like to sponsor five students this year? Would you like to sponsor two students this year? And then we could get some donations to help offset some of the increased Hewitt expenses with these relationships with the local businesses at this position.
Whether there's Hewitt, and when they have these job fairs, some of these folks are finding employment that isn't something it's offered, it's not something Hewitt's teaching.
Right, but where there's overlap, there might be opportunities to
Yeah.
create partnerships, sponsorships.
All right, so thank you, thank you everybody for the feedback. Okay, I think from the board perspective of voting, consensus was to not increase the hours, that's why.
I don't know that it's consensus.
True.
But.
Yeah.
But we have. Majority.
All right. Administrators, I'm still confused on where we sit with the proposed. Administrators, I'm still confused on where we sit with the proposed reduction. Are we looking at administrators at 1325, and specialists at 2%? Yeah. At 1325, is that a non-masters one?
No, it's just a flat off, offstep, similar to what the teachers receive. It doesn't have a degree to it. So it's not the full amount that the teacher might receive. Change in salaries, you can look here.
So I hadn't, I originally had said that I would go with this proposal. But I am unsure right now because I'm concerned about the support staff in terms of if step, like, something Jay said is, you know, we are, like, we also need to take care of our support staff. And I don't know that a step change is enough for support staff. But yet we're giving administrators who make a lot more than support staff. So I, so that's where I'm at. I'm conflicted.
I'd like to piggyback off, you know, off that. So what, what I'd like to, well, first, so first question is the, the specialists. Can you give me, I, I forget what the specialists are.
Psychologists.
Okay, all right, yep, so, perfect. So I, I'd like to see your, the, the administrators and the spe, and the specialists be flat. And then take the support staff, the non-affiliated staff, and put both of those in five.
Mark, why, why, when you say flat, I don't see any change in pay. Is that what you mean?
They, they wouldn't, and, and why I say that is, I mean, shall, you know, basically hit on it. The, the current compensation is fairly high. We're either just above or just below six, uh, six, six figures, I believe, on most of them. Your, your support staff, it isn't close to, to that. So I'd, I'd like to see, you know, the, the support staff, you know, see, you know, see a, a bigger, a bigger jump. Because our higher, higher-earning administrators don't, I don't want to say don't necessarily need it, but.
So your administrators include principals and assistant principals, right?
Yeah.
I know you've been in that position, so, you know, I'm watching at the high school level, basing it there. I agree that the kind of running of business, their hiring, taking appropriate, that's a lot of responsibility.
I know.
I mean, I agree we should take care of the support staff too, but if you were in that role, would you accept not getting the pay increase, or would you start looking for something else?
So not that, so it hasn't been that long since I was, you know, with, within public ed. If, if I was up over in and around six figures, and board member or the board was, was having to, or trying to make a decision between administrative salaries or the lower compensated staff, you know, support staff, I'm, I'm not going to be overly upset. Now, if that goes on for two, three, four, or five years, that's a different score.
So this goes back to, so two things. I worked for a company that did that for a few years, and I left. I gave them about two years, and I'm like, it's not working for me. Right now, second thing is, I think next year, assuming health insurance rates go up and I keep harping on it, it's going to be the very same discussion. So how long do you plan to keep administrators flat? Do you think you can keep them?
So, so, you know, ba, based on this, I, I would not have an expectation of next year of keeping them, of keeping them flat again. You know, why? Because, you know, we, we worked, we, we made an effort to try to, to try to, you know, put, put monies into, you know, into a different area. You can't keep beating up the exact, the exact same people all the, all the time. And it seems to be every time that I've had to build a, you know, build, build a budget, where, where are the big hits coming from that impact the people the most? It's generally your, your lowest compensated people. And that, so that's, that's basically what I'm trying to avoid.
So I, and I'll be quite happy to, maybe I've already made my point, tired of hearing it. Got the support staff, we need to be taking care of the guy administrator, you need to be careful you don't lose him. It, to me, I haven't seen salaries, but I don't know that they're out of line for the responsibility. I, you know, support staff, kind of tough to make a living on some of that pay. So is that why you want to make cuts?
I don't think we want to make cuts anyway.
I know that, so. Me personally, I go back and revisit some other things that are uncomfortable discussions. But cutting people's pay, I've worked for a company that did that, and it just backfired big time.
I guess.
And look at the cost increases. We're all enduring this.
Just take, take a contrarian view, because I'm not sure I necessarily agree with the person. Take a contrarian view. That might be better than going down and riffing a bunch of teachers and creating a very unstable environment.
Well, let me, I'm not saying.
Because we're, we're going to get there too.
I'm not saying we're going to riff a bunch of teachers. What I am saying, you might land at a point, but before you decide to start, excuse me, I'll trace one more. Before you decide to do this, I will look other cuts up here that you feel more comfortable with, see where you land. Is that the right number? Is it going to be more than 4% or 3%? Probably, it's going to be, okay? So I would, right now, going down the list, I would jump on that, if that's my personal.
So I'm, I recommend we table it. Because I want to, I mean, I'm also said I want to find a way for support staff and I. That's where I'm.
Can I ask a question about the proposal in general of Michael? So administrators are at a flat proposal here, and the specialists are 2%. Which one is higher?
Specialist at 2%.
Why not do everybody at 1325 then? Might not make a big difference, just a question. I don't know the, those specialists that you're talking about don't enter my daily work life. But just as a way to. I'm usually about a bar.
Right? Nothing that works?
Well, not right this time.
I'm calling all people, I think it's my sitting here, so John.
If I'm remembering correctly, wasn't it the administrators and the specialists that got a 3.2% increase last year when their quota was only 2.5? Or was that another group?
Last year.
So last year, they already, they got a substantial increase compared to the cola increase.
With a 9% inflation rate.
I mean, I'm just saying, they're, they're not sitting, you know, low.
I, I get that.
They have their.
Obviously, you can tell without moving people I do like to take care of.
It took a long time to fill the specialist positions, right? Like the psychologies, the report. It's extremely competitive.
You have to contract out because you can't fill those positions.
Yep. How many do we employ as the specialists?
I'm hearing Jay wants to discuss.
Because I want, I mean, I think it'd be good to know the number of specialists total, or if we did the flat rate. Do.
Specialists include the teacher's aides.
No, these are the higher paid positions.
Psychologists, school psychologists, physical therapists.
Like facial.
Facial therapist. But like, in the grand scheme of things.
Especially coordinators.
Oh, this goes down 38,000 if we did that.
Yeah.
Right.
Should we also improve the history of the administrative raises we've done over the last seven years? So if someone like Jay understands, Mark says something like, what he just said, just so people know.
We could do that. All right, it's tabled up.
So then that, that would kind of force us to table the, the support staff and non-affiliated too, right?
Yeah, I'm curious what you think about those.
Who's not considered non-affiliated?
There are, so you support staff, like, assistant, they're all.
What's non-affiliated kind of term we would use?
In classroom assistants.
So I've.
There were support staff.
Did you say table the non-affiliated support staff? So I just, I don't think we've decided, but the question was, well, if we weren't able to, administrators and specialists discussion, should we be table and the other two? I think that's what I heard.
Yeah, well, ba, based on my, my suggestion of making sure that they stay, they jump to five, or stay at five or whatever.
Right, because you wanted to increase support staff and non-affiliated support staff to 5%.
If.
So on the, uh, first, uh, I call it the teacher's aides. Have the department heads been asked, those specific teachers, in some cases, how effective those are. And I'll tell you why I asked the question. They interact with a very nice lady, nothing against her, but they interact with the class, not because of her. Since it's gravitated to her, even more the instructor. So I really question what we got of experience with Elias's person. Whatever they retain and remove, they'll follow their own. That's what happened. I didn't see any assistance from the teacher. It was a 10-person class, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think to answer your question, on a pretty lengthy discussion, I thought last, this year, we talked about budget. Well, the assistants, how many did we have? How many were vacant because of last year that were.
Yeah, I remember that.
I think they were vacant positions. We've had that discussion. I think in general, my understanding is they bring quite a bit of value.
It's my case of full-time position. I saw some good results because of the person.
Yeah, I mean, I think unfortunately, we're talking about positions that'll come up because they're not meeting a cost per se. But I think we definitely made some changes to the cost here too, as far as the number of them.
So we already know what the, going back to the five, so based on the suggestion, Mark, this money's right here. And support staff step one, that was going to 5%, it's the $70,141. And then it's non-affiliated support staff originally in there, 5%, that's the.
So that was five.
So you're looking at close to $18,000 that you would be putting back into the budget, back into the proposed budget.
Yeah. So if we kept administr, if, if administrators and specialists were flat, we'd be removing 38. And then if we put the other two back, we'd be adding 78, 88, 88, 7. So total, total gain back.
Well, just to be clear though.
You're not cutting 38, but you can flat.
You'd be cutting more than 38. All right.
Oh, right, yeah, because that was 13, too. Yeah, okay.
So, Mike, Aaron, maybe getting some of those to compare, please compare closely. Yes?
So just to be clear, those last three items are taken at this point. So West is admin grades, we'll be passing six, I think, second, seven years. Specialists at 13.25. Or flat.
Specialists at 13.25 will also flat, both will flat. Okay. Do you go into the.
Yeah, she did.
Okay. I think we should continue on. BMS, general, special ed assistant.
So I have a question about, so do the BMS, general, special ed, and then the special ed teacher? These are the two positions that Tom Mel discussed, moving there. Okay. So I have a question whether we, so two questions about this. Do we have any applicants for either one of these that we want to not offer the job, so they're not put on the list?
No.
Okay. And if we already moved both of these, what's going to happen if the need goes up? If that's something that we can then put back on the budget if the need arises?
Yes. Yeah, so just to touch on that, I think that specifically came up, we talked about the one-to-one behaviors.
Correct.
That one where we said if it was spelled out, have a position, we have to find the position, basically, existing operator. How.
Yeah.
Still looking to hire, it's not budgeting for it, launching the budget throughout the year.
And the BMS.
We do have, that's spelled out, I.
Yeah.
Only the one-to-one behavioral assistant, the general special ed assistant, you can see in my.
The, the general special ed assistant is the one that's been vacant for like 1,300 days.
Yeah.
That we haven't been able to fill.
We have a majority.
We're talking the BMS general.
Sorry, BMS, general, specialist. All right, four one-to-one behavior systems.
So I'm only in favor of not including them in the budget. I mean, that, because we have to hide, like, they're in the academy, so we have to provide it. We need to keep advertising for it, so we can't take out, like, we can't not provide resources. But I'm okay not budgeting for them. That's why I said it the way I did.
Yep.
So I'm trying to remember, I answered the question to, so Michael, on the behavior of people, if you were to play a betting person, what would be the odds if you have hired one or two? And so it's a little bit of money you can potentially left there in your accounting retained or just run into that.
We actually already hired one of those positions.
Yeah.
However, that opened up another vacancy, so it's just turnover. We're going to be, we'll, we'll look to absorb those costs along the way, based on turnover.
Okay.
It's very clear that we're going to have turnover.
Yeah. Sure.
I think Edgar had a question.
We're going to go around, we're going to go around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm confused how we can cut it and not, or keep it, not budget, but cut it for it. Because last year Edgar proposed doing that to the fifth grade teacher, and we told him it was illegal, or that it was, like, not. So I don't know how we keep it, but don't budget for it. So someone could just explain this to me.
Uh, question.
It's definitely not illegal. It's not transparent.
All right, sorry, it was transparent, but we told him.
Monitoring the bottom line budget.
I think the discussion last year, to your point, was to get voter people to have the position back in was a concern.
No, the position was always there.
So we're talking about leaving the position, but putting no monies on it for this year that we're operating in right now as well. You're talking about Edgar had proposed that.
Yeah, I talked about Edgar's comment last year.
He had proposed leaving it on the books, but zeroing it out, not putting any money towards them, and he was told he couldn't, we could not do that. So I don't understand how we keep these in, but don't budget for them, for them.
Because that, another part was that supposedly there was a fund that needed to be funded to a certain level for all the positions that there were, that there needed to be funds in those, in that, I can't remember what it was called. That, all that, all those funds that need to be put in there for all the positions that we had on the budget. But that was part of the logic that you wouldn't. No, that there was some kind of funding account that needed, money needed to be put in for all the costs related to the positions. But, and that was part of the logic behind not being able to do that, that I was told. But I mean, if going forward, we can have the understanding that you can have a position available but not funded. And there's not that other problem when it comes to accounting. Yeah, there was, I can't remember what that, the thing was that you put funds in for the different payments that need to be made. you put funds in for the different payments that need to be made. You said you had to fund the escrow, the billing, and, uh, retirement and all those things, and there needs to be a certain.
Those are, those are based on actual employees, I don't put money in if somebody's not an employee.
Okay.
We don't have a filled position, I'm not putting money in escrow.
I think the difference with these one-to-one behavioral assistants or a, an aid, even if a child right now gets identified and they need an aid, we have to provide.
Yeah.
Doesn't, but that's my point, so we can't, this is a little bit different than saying we're gonna fund another fourth grade classroom. This is saying, we have to provide the special ed services in the IED regardless. So this is all, this is a numbers thing. So I think it's a, for me, it's a little different than a fifth grade, than the fifth grade last year, because that was holding a dollar amount for the total amount of teachers. This, these aren't teachers.
I, I will admit, I can't remember yesterday, let alone a year ago, but I remember it's a conversation, because I, I know for a fact I hated that we were funding a position who was not going to get filled. I know we had the discussion, can we keep the position and not fund it, like, I remember the conversation. I just don't know specifically what you were told, or.
Well, as long as there's an understanding now, that that is key, possible.
Well, I think you hit on the right thing, is that Sean's memory right, the position was funded.
The position was funded, probably the conversation was, if you cut the money out of the position, it's no longer part of the default.
Yeah.
That would have changed.
I think part of the concern with the fifth grade teacher last year is that if it was cut it out of the budget, it would be cut from Canterbury Elementary School, so we would then have to send all of the fifth graders to Belmont Elementary School, which, as we all know, Canterbury showed up in force and said, absolutely not, so we kept it. This is a, is an IED requirement, so it's, it's not something that we can say that we can't have, whereas there was that potential last year, there was that argument made last year, which again, I don't agree with it. But this isn't something that we can say that we can't have, this is part of an IED, this, this is a requirement. So I think that's maybe where some of the, the difference was, I could be wrong, but.
I don't think we could have zeroed out Canterbury teacher last year, I think we have the discussion that we couldn't zero that line item, it wasn't because of the default budget.
I think it's a great idea, with, since we know so far ahead of time, it would be very budget conscious all around as a district, because it's what, eighty-six thousand-ish dollars? That you show them, hey, we know, they've already told us, we're gonna use it, so we're gonna raise those funds for it. The year before, we didn't raise it, I'd much rather not raise the funds ahead of time and tune eighty-six thousand dollars for a position I know no one's gonna use. I think that's what some of taxpayers have a problem with, so if that becomes something that's doable for that position too, because I'm sure it almost could be every other year, depending on the, who's in, you know, which families are in the grade, who wants to stay, and who wants to go to the middle school, I think that's, would be a great option. Rather than to always collect those funds and not always use them.
And well, the reason.
No, you're good.
The part of the reason was last year is because it was over by a hundred and ten thousand dollars, that's why I was saying, if we can zero that one out and still keep it, you know, but as long as, so you're saying, because it's a teacher position, you can't zero it out, but if it's another type of position, you can?
I don't know, I, I agree with your recollection last year is what I'm saying.
If you zero out that CES grade five, if you're looking to find a teaching position in a operating budget, that's not, that has been questioned for.
So.
Fill this position, this position will be filled, we'll, we'll get applicants in this position, it'll be filled. The one-to-one behavioral assistants are on the list because we have the typical time filling them, therefore, we are gonna go into next year's budget, knowing that we still can fill these positions, because there will be turnover, particularly in support staff, that will get us to funding these positions if necessary. So the CES teacher position is different than these one-to-one assistants when it comes to budgeting, because we'll fill this position.
Well, I was just.
Not fill these one-to-one behavioral assistant positions, I'm struggling filling them.
I was just saying, because normally, like, this past year, you had almost two point nine million dollars left, right, in the budget, and, you know, that's why I was saying the money was gonna be there, everything bottom line. You were gonna have the funds available to pay that teacher in, if.
Oh, I, okay, so I can't take the ending fund balance and reserve it for a teacher. That's what we can't do.
No, 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 throughout the year. So, okay, so it is, is it possible to keep a position and not fund it, or not?
So like.
Like you're doing now.
The behavioral assistants, like, is, he's asking if it's possible to keep those on the books, but not fund them, knowing that they're not.
The behavioral assistants?
Yes, that's what we're talking about. So you had said, can we not fund them?
And keep them.
And then I'm asking.
We have, so to me, we have to provide the one-on-one behavioral assistants, we're gonna do it through a contract or cover with existing staff, what we have to hire. So we're just not funding it, because there's no opinion, we probably won't get applicants.
So are we, are we, was it cutting those four positions?
From the budget, we are.
From the budget.
For, yeah, monetary.
But those positions exist.
Because, and I think, it's my opinion, but this is a, an opportunity to do, I think what we were talking about last year.
Yeah.
Which is, hey, we're probably not gonna be able to fill those positions, why are we funding them? And if we do find a way to fund them, I mean, to fill them, it's probably gonna be through turnover, and so we're still gonna have all the vacant positional money sitting in our budget, which is why we have such a surplus of the, so I think, in the end, this is an effort to kind of do what we talked about last year, not fund a position.
Right.
That, you know, in some way or other, over the course of the year, we're not going to be.
I wanna be clear, though, I'm not talking about Canterbury this year, I'm talking about Canterbury last year. We were told that we had to budget that eighty-six thousand or whatever.
Eighty-four thousand, four hundred.
In the budget, otherwise we lost that position. So I just wanna be clear, we're talking about a classroom teacher, and it's a pool of teachers that we have. Um, this is a little bit different, because it's support staff, it's outlined in the IED. So I just want, or is the answer, we can pull the position on the books with no money in it?
So before you answer that, I think, I understand you. So Debbie, only behavioral positions, if, if they're not budgeted, do they affect the total budget?
No.
But a teacher does.
Yes.
Because you're, you've got a contract, it's based on that X number of positions, right?
Well, the teachers are based on the current staff.
Yeah.
These would be one-to-one behavioral assistants, if we were able to fill them, they're, because they're special ed, we would carry them in the default budget.
Yeah, but I think that's the answer.
Edgar, did you still have one to follow?
Well, yeah, and my reason for getting clarity on it is because we know next year, there'll be sixteen students out of fifth grade in Canterbury, right, and for some reason, the following year, there wasn't enough students to stay there and force them to go off, eh, that we could remove the funds and still keep the position, so that later years, we can keep the, have the position available, so that it doesn't end up getting cut, just because there's nobody staying at a Canterbury, like, that's why I wanted to get clarity on it.
I agree, we're thinking some clarity on that.
So can you put me down for a question, when there's time, I'd like to come back and answer a teacher, but not me.
So somebody mentioned, I think it was Edgar, unspent on balance for the year that just ended. He said two, two point nine million?
Or two, or two point six.
Do you have those numbers for the last couple of years, because I'm just curious, as we're talking about cuts, what have we been having for a balance at the end of the year?
So I can get that information, there's a total fund balance, and that's, total fund balance is not necessarily what goes back to offset taxes and what's reserved. So I can get all that information back next year.
I do wanna know what goes back to, um, set, offset taxes, but I kinda really wanna look at what we're not spending, because I think that, that would go a long way when looking at this list.
Well, there's revenues as well.
I understand.
We publish that every year in the public hearing books.
I just didn't have it. I try not to keep the public hearing books every year. I'm sorry, I did for a long time, and I had to urge.
All right, Eddie passed, Bob, two trees. I wanna move on.
I'm pretty sure Greg has two, so.
We have a majority.
And that, that's the behavioral assistants.
Yes, specialized teacher.
Yeah, that means we'll have cut total of these special ed teachers. And we're told that we can still provide the services as outlined in the IED. The reason that I've said yes to this is because we have the ability to hire them, we should keep them.
If we can find that money in the budget.
But if the need arises, obviously.
I would come to you as supportive and approve that.
Just as long as there is a way to bring it back, like, like Edgar, there's a way to bring it back, because I question the need. I mean, we all heard those complaints made a couple of weeks ago, and I wanna make sure that our special ed teachers are, if they're not under, that our departments not under staff, that we're not carrying away kids that need these services, just to keep the numbers still, that makes sense. That is my fear, I mean, that's what we should, most of all, teachers to fund.
And I'm also just gonna say, I'm a no on everything else on this list, so.
A no on what?
On everything else on this list, I think.
Good mark. Any other discussion on that, specialized teacher. All right, school resource officer.
Yep.
I'm looking for company. I don't have one. I'm very important and, yes.
Is there, um, our candidate? Got one, you have me right now?
Yes, I was notified on Monday that the, this department fell, this department has a candidate, they're looking forward, it's higher, they asked that they pause that hiring process, it's going to the board side.
I'm inclined to table it, but I was a, not filled, hedging out to tabling it.
Well, I answered before, we had someone else who was a good position.
What's that?
Potential, that was my decision.
Start over.
Last, I didn't have somebody.
Go back around, sort of.
Yeah, I think we should start over, yeah, sure, we have someone to fill the position.
Well, do we know if he liked that person? Or not?
That's, I mean, I don't know, but like, just like with the CES grade five, I didn't know we had sixteen people, and I was like, yeah, let's not fill it, and it's like, well, we have sixteen people, I didn't know we had someone who's actually fully in the process, very special ed. So, yeah, there's someone that's gonna fill it, great, if there was someone to fill it right now, then why are we budgeting for it? That's all I was gonna say.
We have someone currently going through to, you school resource officer.
My understanding, we got an email on my desk, yesterday.
So the only question I was gonna ask, was a lot of justification concern about the need for this. To your point, you got an applicant idol, that suddenly the problems last year were heard about gotten better. Of course, it's one thing, just let the principals feel like stool, and a safety issue, somehow this has a bad safety.
Definitely an important position in the district, I would definitely thank you for your.
I mean, I don't doubt the importance of the position, based on past experiences, I make a good position. I'm just, we're at that point where.
You have to make a choice, or maybe not.
Great.
I'm just saying, one violent, this person can't necessarily stop a violent event, but if they dial the tag a lot.
That's not.
I don't know.
It's one person for the district, correct?
Yeah.
And as much as it's a violent event, like, that's certainly a concern, there's a lot more as far as the connections they make with the students, so.
I don't know personally, I'm just saying.
Piece of it, I understand it, I've seen it firsthand, but I also know that I don't wanna lose classroom teacher.
I can only speak to what I experienced here at Belmont Elementary, and the Belmont Police Department does a great job at making connections at the elementary school levels, I never worked at the higher levels, but to make sure that some of our kids in this community are getting positive interactions with the police that they might not get in other areas of their life. So that, we were seeing lots of different faces, and not only the resource officer in here, you know, reading to the classes and such, um, but the resource officers for some of those kids that do need it for them to have that familiar place as well.
If I remember right, I can't speak to the Middlesbrough, I, I don't know, I'll be quiet, but maybe you talk to the principals of the Middlesbrough high school. And we just had some interesting problems to deal with, yeah.
Any strong opinions, you know, right?
Based on the fact that we have a candidate, I'd say table.
All right, I'm gonna table, we have some justice, I'm just not.
So tabling is that.
Oh, yeah.
Police department to go ahead and move.
Yeah.
On the meeting that.
Clear direction.
He still needs a meaningless candidate, however, if somebody of these four decides to cut the position through this process, then there's work just for this year.
Yeah, we need to have a clear conscience.
Table, it doesn't, doesn't seem like you know where to share.
I think the hard part for me is, you guys haven't even vetted the candidate, so. I would say move forward, I mean, that's, well, and then.
So you guys meet again in just a week, there could be a lot more information that maybe could be obtained from the VPD to see how that process is going, maybe, before making a.
Yeah.
Unless it's the.
I don't wanna lead them along and then say.
But is it somebody that they?
I know it's a recommendation from the police department, because I also found out about this, because I saw it on the agenda for the board to select me for this evening.
So. Can we just be upfront, honest, in person?
No, I'm sure, I'm sure that's already happened at this point. So I, I trust our police department, particularly those that are running the search, if they're, if they bring Florida candidate, um, it's gonna be a great candidate, a great fit for our school district, so I'm not, I'm not necessarily concerned about that.
And this is just the school districts portion, is this around up to forty thousand, this thirty-nine, five, eighty-five?
We pay the full salary.
So it's, it's somebody who works part-time?
Part-time.
So I go back, I don't want to change whatever table needs, but it sounds like the discussion's gravitating, if you didn't have a candidate, then you ought to consider cutting, I would go back and say, is the need there? Put the money there and get somebody to fill it.
Yes, for me, Jay, just so you know, it's not about the need, it's not about the need, because.
All of these are needs.
All of these are needs, like, I wanna find this school to work person, there's a need. Like, I, so just so you know, I'm struggling with this, because we're gonna, I'll tell you straight up, right now, we're still, I, I, because I have this objection that I created, I mean, we're still at roughly a five percent increase. Give or take, right, so, and we haven't gone through it all, but I'm just saying, at some point, there's a need. So I was, I would like us to meet this candidate first, I think we should be fully upfront with it, because if I have to choose a teacher or a school resource officer, what might that be? I don't know, I think we have to have that conversation, so that's where I'm at.
So the business person in me says, you got elected, of course, it's being taught, and maybe they're more important than the resource officer, maybe they're more important than a behavioral specialist, I don't know. This is where I was going back to my group here question. If the board is making a decision and you want to give below five or six percent, wherever we are right now. And if you want to do that, then you're right, we're just difficult decisions. Now, I don't know that you have enough information to decide what is the importance. Like teachers are great. Don't get me wrong. I'm not going to cut a teacher. But if you want to give below the five percent or whatever, you're going to be into that decision. What position's going to go? I think unless there's something else, some rest of the budget, just go back.
All right, so we're going to move ahead. See, yes, grade five.
Can I ask a question first?
Hold on.
So we have numbers next year to support grade five being at Canterbury Elementary. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I would say.
What did Jeff say? I didn't hear you.
That's it. I'm not cutting that. They have sixteen kids for next year that already have been getting involved, so we're going to fund the position.
That's a big equal there.
Right. Well, I mean, there, there is the option that, that we don't and then we would, we would require those students to come, you know, to, to come to Belmont. And then the middle school has the ability to absorb.
That's, that's what it's called. So there is a difference, as I understood it. Elementary in Belmont is one through four. Middle school is what, five through eight?
So.
I don't personally understand why there's a difference.
Space. Space is the main. I mean, CES used to have fifth grade back in the day, right?
Yes.
CES used to have sixth grade.
Yeah, they both used to have all the way to sixth grade.
I guess I, if we truly want to go down, I'm not saying I want to, but if we truly want to go down a road of not having fifth grade ever at Canterbury and make the decision. Again, I'm not saying I support this, then we need to, that's part of, to me, the longer term plan. We don't cut it out of the budget now. So then, you know, and not have a discussion about it. So if this board, if we want to do that, then we need to engage the community and talk about that to make a decision. And if we need to be talked about now, so that next budget season.
Yeah, now for next.
Now for next year, because I don't support, well, I don't support it in general, but I definitely don't support just cutting it from the budget because PMS can absorb it.
So Michelle, what you're proposing makes sense. Would the board make a decision, make that long-term decision before that position's hired? Otherwise, in fact, you're not going to make a decision. That came out wrong, but you're back to, somebody's now in a position, you make a decision, not going to get very near someone's. So would the board make a decision before the hiring?
All right.
We can't, we don't have the time to do that.
Yeah.
I'm not saying not budget it, I'm just saying the decision before the person's hired.
I don't believe that there is an appetite in Canterbury to use that fifth grade at that Canterbury Elementary school. I truly don't believe that there's an appetite for it, right? I truly think that Canterbury wants to see that position remain. I think they want to keep their, you know, what? How old are you in, in fifth grade? Ten, eleven years old? I think they want to keep their ten, eleven-year-olds as close to them as possible.
Me personally, I take the money out of the equation. I agree with you. I'm not sure mixing fifth grader and those.
All right, so we've made a decision. We want to keep going.
Can I ask a couple of questions that were back on the other pages before you keep going?
Sure.
Just, there are Debbie probably quickly. The audit function went up twenty-five hundred dollars. Is that a quote that we get? Like your auditor tells you how much?
So we do have a contract with the auditor right now.
Yeah.
And every other year we have to pay for a Gatsby forty-five.
Okay.
To see rate.
Yeah.
And that's the forty-five hundred dollars, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars, even though it's, that came in higher.
Totally makes sense. And then the legal, the only number I have for actual to go by is twenty-twenty-five and we're almost, let's say eight thousand dollars lower than what gets budgeted. Maybe if I could.
We expended it lower.
Yes.
Knowing we're going to negotiations, we may or may not need legal.
Okay.
So.
Okay, because this year there's twenty-five thousand budget and the upcoming is twenty-five thousand, but the, in the twenty-five actual was sixteen nine.
Definitely.
Okay. That makes sense.
And that all depends on what happens in the district, but knowing negotiations, I'm not saying we're going to have legal at the table, but you want to make sure that you have the ability if you need it.
That represents about, used to be thirty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Let's do one more, which is the support staff. We have thoughts.
I would like to have Jeff's thoughts and the buildings and grounds, but it needs thoughts, not to put it out there.
No, that's fine.
Building and grounds.
We've talked about it and the contracted service, it would actually be a savings if you did get rid of this individual. With the contracting services, because we do it with the elementary school now, then we would just do the high school. But the only catch-up of that is now the director and the, the long grounds, they would be responsible for, for long striking all the time. But working at the bottom of the earth. I want to go there, hold on, so building the grounds, that's, pop that, go with contracting services.
It's not a full-time position?
Yep.
Would this affect the safety of the students and staff? You're trying to cut down the flames for the health insurance. And I'm just thinking of icy conditions when people arrive at school. If we cut the grounds too much, will we not have a chance to take care of potential falls and slips? In the icy conditions in order to fix them?
Specific to icy conditions. Our ground stuff, walk, the walkways. We, we hire somebody to do the, the driveways. My son's about to craft stuff, the areas, for example, walkways, chiseled, snow blowing, they also plow. Particularly say if we need to do a run-through because we get a dusty during the day before, before dismissal. We'll do a run-through in the parking lots, the dome lots specifically. So you know, the sort of lead custodians, if it's during the day or first thing in the morning or anything, custodians are also doing assault, being punished and so forth.
So you're saying it's a safety issue?
I'm not saying it's a safety issue.
No, I'm just, to your, to your question.
Look, he asked.
Somebody mentioned earlier, maybe combining the grounds position with one of the vacant custodial positions. Was that an option?
It's second shift.
So snows, he works in the afternoon.
I think, I think what I heard was the custodial positions that are vacant are second shift. And so if we combine it, in theory, the grounds person doesn't have a whole lot of ground to work to do second shift.
Especially due to the time of year and getting dark earlier.
Yeah, that's what I heard earlier.
Yeah.
Could their schedule be adjusted based on the season?
I guess what you're saying is you still need the custodian second shift on, right?
Right, because that's when a lot of cleaning gets done after the kids leave.
So shifting down, say, oh, dear, it takes away from the pocket you definitely second shift.
It wouldn't be able to do a lot of cleaning in the early afternoon. Students are still in.
No.
When it starts getting dark.
In the scenario where we find somebody for the second shift custodian position. And we lose a first shift custodian, I'm going to be annoyed because in theory that, that plan works.
Yeah.
And so I, I don't know if it's dust.
Well, in the theory of the second shift, second shift starts at what time when we're talking first school?
Two thirty, three o'clock in the afternoon.
Two thirty or three?
It goes with the shifts.
And then they work until?
Nine, ten, been taking out the lunch.
Sorry.
If we were, if we were to do more of like a, just trying to be creative and, and you know, you got to have, you said you need the custodial positions and have somebody to work on some grounds or some, if that position was more of like a twelve to eight, whatever you want to say. You'd have more shove, you'd have more snow clearing help during that part of the day. What, what would we be missing? I'm sure there's something after eight, but just asking, just trying.
I think this, doesn't this snow plowing happen in the morning? I mean, if you're getting a snowfall during the day, something may, it's a blessing, but it may be bad.
Oh, you don't?
They're, they're evil.
They plow during the day too, so. And we contract with services.
I think we combine the position and look at a twelve to eight position.
Like just to try to. We have those two positions that we need to clean, but maybe we can share it between that and so we can still save some money and take care of some stuff.
I'm very slow. I have to play, to play now.
Would basically be grounds slash custodian position. And the hours you have to figure out, but start around noon-ish. And end around, are they eight-hour days?
And maybe it does move a little bit per the season, because maybe because of indoor basketball games, it's one to nine.
Yeah.
But then in the spring they come in at twelve because there's more fields to line for baseball and softball kind of thing. But that might be easier to fill if somebody knew they got to spend part of their day outside and just not all of it clean inside. Might not, but.
What would that, you need to know what that costs.
I don't see a saving because I'm still contracting out services.
Such a contracting out list.
No, because they contract the services for landscaping specifically. You're talking about Joyce Janitorial.
Well, why would you contract out landscaping? We have someone to manage.
Then if you go twelve to eight for second grounds, you're not going to need all, not going to have time to do all the, all the landscaping that's required for these buildings. But twelve to eight should.
Well, then I cut it. I mean, something's got to give. Like, I mean, I know I'm be, I'm not trying to be flippant, but we either have to find creative solutions or, or not. Like I just, I.
I think you let us run the numbers on this.
Well, that's, so that's what I asked. So.
I thought, I have first plans. I'm not saying it's a saving, but let us run the numbers.
So part of the savings to me would be not funding this part. You're funding the, the other one and just renaming it and figuring out how to best use those resources. I don't know who the boss of that person would be. Probably the same.
I don't know. I'm just trying to look at what we have and we have to like, we can't have it all. I mean, we're not even going to get what, wow.
So that proposal is kind of a happy.
I was trying to see if, did it do anything for us, right? I know it's not ideal. Something's probably not going to get done. So what are we giving to getting? Like, I don't know the answer, but. Clearly I'm frustrated and I apologize, but I have spent a lot of time on this budget, as we all have, like trying to come up with some different things. So if we can't, then I, for me, I'd be right, cut it then. I can't.
All right, that's up. You want to keep going or?
I'd take off the athletic trainers. She just cut that.
Because this note in here is not removing the athletic trainer. Is it removing it altogether or is it removing what was proposed as an increase?
Removing the increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes. Because if you're really looking for more, I might be okay with removing the whole thing. Because we do have nine-one-one. Better than removing a teacher.
I'm okay with it.
So when you, when you say okay, are you, are you okay with the not increasing the, the amount of time or what Tracy said?
Tracy didn't have a vote.
I'm okay with thirty thousand.
But you're, you're, you're talking.
I was okay with removing the thirty thousand.
Not increasing by that.
Not increasing by.
Okay, keep keeping as-is.
Define as-is. We funded it this year. We funded it this year, so we need to be careful when we say as-is. So what I'm saying is Michael not on the list he wanted, but would the athletic trainer under co-curriculars athletics.
Yep.
As a reduction of thirty thousand. That is what I.
So that's the increase that he was proposing. So we still have a fifty thousand dollar pot to use across the full year for the athletic trainer.
Yes.
One season. Why was a thirty thousand dollar?
It's fifteen thousand dollars per season. So that's forty-five grand for three seasons.
So what happens if it don't increase? I'm going back to Tracy's.
We don't have that in two other seasons.
Yeah.
Or we don't have the type of availability for a full season.
Okay. So back to Tracy's point, that's still valued that the team or the board wants, right?
I mean, for, to keep the fifteen thousand?
No, I, what I don't really understand is if the thirty thousand is not removed, then assuming this person will continue to stay for the price they're getting paid, they're covering not all the seasons, right? So you're not having a reduction in service yet, assuming they don't do, is that correct?
No, it is a reduction in services because we amended this year's budget. Board approved this last year to amend this year's budget to include thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for the athletic trainer that is servicing our students this year. So this will be a reduction in those services next year.
Okay, so what's left in services? Is the board comfortable with that or are you back to Tracy's point?
Are we comfortable with anything?
Comfortable is the wrong word. I mean.
Right, it's not comfortable, but I am.
I'm phrasing that question. You're going to have less services than what you approved last year.
Right, so that's, that's my question.
Keep in that position.
Is with, so with, with the the, the proposed thirty thousand dollar cut, the services that are left, are, are they, is, is it worth it having that, that person in, in limited capacity or do we look at that and say, what's, what's the point? And I, I don't know the answer to that question. I'm, I'm looking for feedback from the rest of the board.
So my understanding is previously that could also be used to have fire and rescue, attend some of the events too, depending on what we have. So I wouldn't cut it to nothing. Fine.
I have a hard time paying an athletic trainer when people are having a hard time paying their taxes. December sixteenth is going to come and many of us are looking at. Oh, we need to pay our taxes so the kids have athletic trainer?
Well, just, just so you know, like I've been the athlete that got the services from the athletic trainer and they tape your ankles for like track meets or stuff and they help, when you have injuries, they help you like work through the healing process so that you heal faster or better or with guidance, you know, you know what I mean? Like, so you're not out a lot of games, but you're out. Or, you know, they help, they help, they help.
But with what we're leaving in there for fifteen grand, they're definitely not in there every day working with every athlete.
No.
They are, what my other question would be is what is our, admittedly never a hockey mom, Sean. Is hockey one of those things that we have to have an athletic trainer at a game, like a football game?
No, I mean, we're the only school that doesn't, but.
Absolutely recommend it as a hockey mom.
Yeah. What's that?
I would absolutely recommend it as a hockey mom.
Right, so I'm, I didn't know if it was a state like, if, because I seem to think football might make it mandatory too.
Do we have football?
Not anymore.
Okay.
But my point was the fifteen thousand is going to go to those hosted events that we have to use. This athletic trainer is not going to be wrapping our athlete's goals on a regular basis, because fifteen thousand dollars is not going to buy that. It's going to buy a person present at our hosted sanctioned events, right?
Okay.
Make sure it's plain.
Basically, the high need events is what I, yeah, was what I was saying.
If you can contract that service.
Correct.
So it's athletic trainers who are taking on full-time jobs.
Yep.
I want to sum up the athletic trainer or on-call people for hockey routine, by the hockey program.
That's cool. I had also heard, not in this setting, but in a different setting, that perhaps the board had made an agreement with the Belmont Fire Department last year and some of their EMTs. Well, then I think that that's a great, if you can't find an athletic trainer, at least you have somebody there to, you know. I think every ti, year my kids were in school, there was at least one injury each year that everybody went, huh, never seen that. You want to have somebody there for that.
So that's like, actual hockey did a very, a holiday tournament, they had an EMT.
Yeah.
Basically watching the games.
So that there would still be, with this reduction, there's still fifteen thousand dollars in the budget to do that.
Why did we stop using the Belmont Fire Department EMT services? Did they not want to do it anymore?
It's not a matter of not wanting to do it, that, that we enjoy having them at the game, it's just off the availability. It was our wrong call, so that's a priority compared to helping to those athletic.
I'll, I'll go with Jeff's recommendation.
Which calls?
Thirty thousand.
Yeah, I just can't rush. Alright. You're good for me here.
I want to throw out one thing, just so it doesn't, I won't be rude to you. Um, I don't, I'm not asking for discussion. Um, I've considered asking that all of the, um, so curriculum, VES, BMS, VHS, come, go back, look at their budgets and be at a zero percent increase. I don't know what that would be, I'm not asking, I'm not nickel and diming, but it would be curriculum, twelve thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars, VES, B minus five, two-two-seven, BMS, two-eight, four-one, VHS, thirteen, six, two-two, for a total of thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Why isn't CES over?
Because they're already at a negative seventeen thousand athletic.
Same with special ed.
Special ed's low, I mean, could do that, because we only look at, we only typically look at percent over budget. And so I'm also like, again, I'm totally looking at this from the perspective of, truthfully, I don't want to rip anyone, that's just where I'm coming from. So I'm also like, well, how about, I trust Michael that he's been through the budget, but I'm also saying that's thirty-three thousand dollars potentially that we could. So just so you know where I'm coming from, again, I think I told you, I'm just trying to be creative, growing things out there, trying to keep in mind taxpayer dollars.
So I, we, we don't need to-
Nope.
Talk about it once, I think about it. I guess, I would just say off the top of my head, if all of our departments came in flat or under, that would show taxpayers that we are definitely doing the best we can to be as low as possible, not going to be flat, we're not going to be a one percent increase, but we're, we are trying. But, good night.
I had a point. I would like sometime, I don't know if the board makes financial goals, like for one year, three year, five years, what the case might be, but I would like to see a study or analysis done if we close Canterbury Elementary. Because, wait a minute, wait a minute, because it sounds like, oh yeah, we get millions from it. But if you weigh the pros and cons, the cost of busing, the cost of more support staff at VES, so it may not be as cost-effective as you first think when you hear it. And I think that would go far to let the taxpayer know that, hey, we've compared the two, closing versus keeping it open, and it's only twenty-five thousand that'll be effective. Where they go, well, that's not worth it. So I think it would show the pros and cons, you know, because it's not a direct prospect. You still have the kids going to school, you still have the cost of students. So I would just be curious.
Thank you.
Just before we keep going, there's a charter problem to that. When the charter was established, Canterbury, it has to have at least one school.
Really?
Yeah, so even the charter would have to solve in order to do, that happen.
When was the charter?
In the eighties, nineteen eighty-one?
Seventy-two.
Or seventy?
Yeah.
It's close to seventy-two.
It's on our website.
Yeah.
The articles of agreement in the, uh, when the, uh, district was formed.
I'd just like to add, we were all gun-wrenched last year, but full discussion on splitting Canterbury and Belmont. I, I don't, I think it's a great idea, but I don't know that you want to, want that discussion again. And I'm, you know, not that I've got a broad base of voters, but I do watch the Belmont Facebook page. This particular topic hasn't come up. I think it's a great idea, but resurfaced some stuff last year, redesigned, we flunked.
I think it might reassure the president that we've checked into it, and it's not as cost-effective as we thought of.
And for two years, I sat on a budget, I mean, a committee for withdrawal from Canterbury, and if people were paying any attention to that, which there were probably only three besides Alice, Randy and I, that paid any attention, they might have seen that it would have had an impact to Belmont if Canterbury left. So they could simply pull that study and see that, because Canterbury was looking at a withdrawal. So there is that information out there and maybe, you know, we, it makes a huge impact at Belmont in a negative way.
Oh, in a negative way?
Yeah, in, in, not a positive way.
Sorry, this year, you would, there would be no way.
No.
And from Canterbury too.
Yeah.
Or no from Canterbury.
And additionally, I don't want to speak for the district, but there is no way this elementary school could take on the students from Canterbury Elementary School, there's not enough.
See, that's what I was wanting.
There's no way, no, no, we're more than top.
Are we tall at this point?
Alright, well, Dr. S, any, anything else for the budget at all? Alright, I am going to move on to public communication correspondence. Anyone in the public wish to speak?
Amanda LeBlanc, I know you don't usually answer questions from the audience, but maybe I can ask and you can tell me, I'm ready to answer that. Um, is the seventeen percent or the health insurance increase, does that apply to administrators as well? Not just?
So the seventeen percent increase, oh, man, you said, the seventeen percent increase is on the plans that the teachers have? The twenty-one percent increase is on the school care yellow plan, which administrators and support staff have.
Would you anticipate that giving them a thirteen, twenty-five increase covers the cost of their health insurance increases?
Um, I would have to run that number, but if it does, it would be very close.
So certainly, lap rate, not even cover the cost of their health insurance increases, which means that we would ask administrators specifically to come back next year to work for less. And I think that's entirely unethical to ask any employee, whether it be support staff or administrator, to work for less money, given the other employment opportunities that exist in education. I think that every person who works in this district, whether it be support staff, teacher, grounds crew, administrator, deserves a fair wage for their work. And if we keep underfunding fair wages, we're just going to keep contracting out more and more services, which are more expensive, as has been said many times tonight, than what we offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? Alright, Ed Curry.
I just wanted to make, I was trying to make this comment earlier when it came up with the cost of healthcare. Um, so when you say the healthcare is going to go up one point two million dollars, you're saying the current value of healthcare is increasing by that percentage. So originally, when it was only going to go one at nine hundred ninety-six thousand something, it would put our future healthcare cost at seven million six hundred and thirty-six thousand something dollars. So when you say how much is increasing, it's of the current amount, how much more is increasing?
I think Randy had come up with that, our, with the twenty-one percent, we were at five.
No, they-
That was her backwards. Do you remember?
No, and then when she says, when she says the two percentages, it's because there are two different plan, two different sections.
Okay.
Right?
So it's seven million?
Yeah, seven million six hundred and thirty-six originally, but with, it changes with the increase that happened. I haven't done the math wrong yet.
Make a motion to the chairman. Alright, go on. Thank you, everyone.